Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting over. Go on, call.
I'm Kelly.
Present.
I'm Jenny Geiling.
Here.
Rick Wall.
Here.
Robin Wall.
Here.
Linda Langster.
Here.
Virginia Wikey.
Here.
Leon Flood.
Here.
Mayor Carey.
Here.
Dana Porter.
Has everyone had a chance to read the minutes? The minutes from May ninth, two thousand twelve. Are there any questions? Hand it over. Yes. If not, I need a motion to approve the minutes from May ninth, two thousand twelve. Second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
All right. Aye. Move on with the Treasury report.
Um, we'll start with the C D schedule. There were two C Ds that renewed in May, opened the general fund, and they rolled over at a special rate of point seven percent. There are no C Ds due in June, and then I think there's three that are, that will be due in July. Then on the monthly treasures report, the general fund had income of five thousand nine hundred sixty-two dollars and sixty-one cents, and expenses of four thousand seven hundred sixty-five dollars and seventy-four cents, leaving a bank balance of twenty-five thousand seven hundred eighty-seven dollars and seventy-two cents. The water fund had income of eleven thousand three hundred thirty-one dollars and seventy-nine cents. That miscellaneous income was from Edgar County Bank and had to do with the water plant. The expenses were nine thousand one hundred ninety-six dollars and eleven cents, and the water plant payment, it was for six thousand seven hundred fifty-five dollars and nineteen cents, of which five hundred dollars was the processing fee, and then the rest of it was interest that was paid on the loan. So the bank balance ended up being forty-one thousand four hundred ninety-four dollars and fifteen cents. The motor fuel tanks received six hundred twenty-seven dollars and eight cents. The expenses were one hundred sixty-one dollars and seventy-one cents, leaving nine thousand two hundred four dollars and fifty-nine cents for, for this year. And the farm fund, uh, the income was three thousand seven hundred fifty-two dollars and seven cents because we did receive the spring cash grant on the farm. And the expenses, uh, which included the playground equipment, came to nine thousand one hundred seventy-eight dollars and fourteen cents, leaving a bank balance of five thousand two hundred seven dollars and fifty-nine cents. For the D C E O grant, the drainage grant, there was no receipts and no expenses. However, for the month of June, we have received another payment. And I think she's got it down to pay out to Edgar County. And then you have an extra sheet. Oh dear. When I did the annual report, and I don't know how this happened, I've got an idea, but anyway, the disbursements were, the dollar amounts were off by one line all the way down the page. The receipts were okay, but the disbursements were off. And the water fund, we did cash in a ten thousand dollar C D. So investments up at the top says forty-two thousand five hundred. Under receipts, investments redeemed, deposit to checking account was ten thousand dollars. Then, under disbursements, even though it's not the checking account, it says investments redeemed, and it's removed from investments. And it had to be done that way in order for the cash on hand to balance out with what was in the checking account. So this page should replace the page that you had in your annual report. And I, it was just gone right past me. Is Linda Langster, have been so observant? You gave me a phone call, so I appreciate her help.
Okay. Are there any questions on the Bill's table or the Treasury report?
On the Bill's table, what's the John here, I'm sure.
That's Will Keen.
John, good.
Okay.
So is that the fertilizer or what?
Yes.
Anything else? No, I need a motion to approve Treasury report, bill, pay the bills. So, aye. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Can you move on with the Department of Sports, Leon?
Aye.
Virginia?
Well, I haven't sent out too many letters, but I have a question on Murphy's sidewalk. This is authorized, I need a.
Murphy's sidewalk?
Oh yeah, Rodney, well, Rodney, yeah, Murphy's is the county, that's next, excuse me. Yeah, Rodney.
Rodney's sidewalk, well, most of you probably understand the third street's a county road. So the sidewalk's a county property also. So I contacted the county, the county was where Rodney was doing that in their bedroom. Also, didn't cost them money, they had no problem. So county.
So then this ordinance doesn't mean anything?
What ordinance is that?
Billy's, the property sidewalk, make it so.
That's, yeah, but that, not that.
So that's the county of?
That's, yeah.
County doesn't.
Yes, that's county road.
I'm not talking to you, Dennis.
Excuse me, no, it's not, I'll do that. Okay.
No, I'm trying to listen to you.
Okay, yeah, this is county road, they are county sidewalks. I talked to Dennis Hanner in there about it, he looked it up on the map. When county road was originally put through there, the county put in the sidewalks, it is their right of way, it's their responsibility.
They won't do anything to repair them?
County road. What else you got? Linda?
The Edgar, I just paid a grant for the, uh, park equipment. To Edgar County Community Foundation, and they gave us two thousand dollars to help save the park equipment, so I can thank sort of the community.
My thing, Linda.
It sure helped, okay. And then I think Springfield did okay, and something beautiful, but. In fact, back to the forest, we need to raise the insurance on the park equipment if you have not done that.
What, two bucks?
Uh, we have, I listed all of that.
Not here with me right now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wishful, I have.
Okay.
And that's all I have to say.
Rick?
Nothing, nothing to report, uh, right. Chris is not here.
Oh, Chris is not here, delay.
I know he's been working on meters.
He's got eighty and.
Eighty.
There we go. Over half.
How come, all the things?
Don't know, I had to, they, there was a problem with the address, I had to call them and give them some information so we can get all the jewelry.
Chris said they called it a jewelry locate. Typically, that happens, I mean, as soon as that gets done, that means contractor's moving.
So, I was hoping they'd start this week, but probably next week is the worst.
Chris is gonna mark our water line, so he doesn't bore a hole in it.
Did Chris talk to you about the water reader at the bulk sales plant?
No.
He called me a couple nights ago, and he had said that the only thing that they could do on the adjustments on that to is by six-second intervals. And he was gonna change it by one interval. I talked to him, I said, I don't think that's gonna be near enough for the increase. So he did two. And I've talked to Gary this afternoon about it, I'm not sure that's gonna be enough. So we need to get some kind of tank in there and see if it pumps a quarter or sees as what it is pumping, so we can get a better understanding of what we wanna raise on that. Is that pretty much our way of doing it? You guys, you guys need to also decide how, what rate you want that water sold at. You want it equal to the minimum amount, you want it higher, what do you want?
Well, I don't think we need to make it higher. We don't want, we don't want. Drive people. Yeah, we're not buying one. I know there's not a lot of places they can go, but I don't think we are. Bill, our new water plant on the back seat wouldn't have it down by the water.
I agree. What, do you have ideas to what we want to set that rate at, equal to the minimum?
Uh, Gary, you had a, gave me a slip on that. I can't remember what the amount was that you came up with. It was right around our eleven dollar amount, wasn't it? Like eleven and a quarter or?
Well, figuring the minimum, the three thousand gallon minimum, and we're paying the thirty-one dollars, it figures out ten dollars and thirty-three cents a thousand. And that's when Leon changed it back in oh-six. Uh, he set it right at six bucks, it was in the upper fives. And, uh, but we were on a fifteen dollar minimum back then. So they were actually paying a dollar more a thousand.
Okay. You wanna give it to Chris, or do you want me to give it to Chris and see if we can work that out, or?
Yeah, I'll give it to him, if he comes in tonight, I'll talk to him. We wait every minute, we just took the old, run the water, gonna be a building, check, check together, let you figure out actually get, what we do. We'll get the, help, help, things, we got that right.
I've got a tank that we can use, it actually has markings on it for the different gallons that we can fill on my trailer, we can take it over there if we need to, to see what goes with that. Is that all you got, Rick?
Yeah, that's it.
Robin?
Um, not really that much, but I do want to make sure that everybody knows that Dan did a really good job getting the town all spigot up for the festival.
Looked real nice.
Looks good.
All right.
Can you say you've been working on that bug sprayer, so is it fixed, or are you still?
What's that?
Working on it, the bug sprayer?
Yeah, I'm still working on it.
What was wrong?
Oh, the pressure gauge was screwed up on it, of course, I changed all in it. And it would start before it was getting there.
Okay.
You need to take that over, Chris has been wanting us to take it over to level, but over to Gary, and then we all read that for him, if you want to sure.
Yeah, I called him up.
Okay.
Talked to him.
You wanna see if you can work that out, or get that over there, or?
Hang on, we'll get right over there.
Yeah, you gotta have a point. I like it was oh-six.
Yeah, it's been a long time, yeah.
Yeah.
We changed holders plus everything, I, you want me to change that photo on?
That's it.
Okay, ma'am?
I'm glad I'm getting the insurance raised on the, that's next meeting, I have to do it for you.
Right. Move on with the public comment. Go ahead.
I've got a question. Did you, as mayor, get a letter from the school board?
I was supposed to, but I have not seen it yet.
I just wanted to talk to them.
Yeah, I, I haven't seen it. Uh, I was told that I would be getting it, I was told what it was all about. I haven't seen it.
Yeah, I was thinking today, so I was just telling you.
So.
Just wondering if you'd go. And how do you feel, but you know what's about, so how do you feel? They're trying to make towns not want Newman to give up their school basically 'cause it'll hurt their property values.
No.
They're pretty much.
Try that again, I.
They're, they're asking other towns to kinda not want, get rid of Newman's school because if they get rid of the school in Newman, it hurts the property values in Newman. And my question is, which do we value, the property value there, or what's happening with our kids and the amount of money it takes to maintain the buildings on?
So what's your opinion? I put you on the spot.
Oh, my opinion is they need to go shy of.
Even at what cost?
It's gonna, if they would give us numbers, which they never do, and tell us what it costs to maintain that building, it's in terrible disrepair.
Should be, bring the information, that's, there, you should be able to get it.
And it was even struck by lightning not long ago, did you know that? There was a storm, and came through and popped tiles up.
Bill?
Uh, yeah, week before last, while I was working out the ball line, and there was a board crew showed up at Yole High School. And, uh, I didn't pay any attention to it at the time, but after they had left, they had left red warning tape and asbestos as a placards posted on the building. Uh, the following day, they returned, and, and of course, at that time, I asked the guy, you know what's going on, and he said, well, they, uh, they found some, some asbestos, and then they were gonna remove it. So, does that mean that that redneck recovery, your recycling outfit, is going to continue on with demolishing the building? Does anybody know about this, have any information?
Do you know anything about this?
Yes, I have lots of information, I should have brought it, it's all been taken care of. The EPA took out, uh, one few, something of asbestos, and they have already taken it to F and M. He has the all clear. Everything's been taken care of.
Oh, so these people were, were sent by the L N O or EPA?
They were asbestos removal.
Oh.
They took the asbestos out, there's very little asbestos in there.
Oh, okay, but, but who sent it? And how it works, where did the bills go?
Rednecks removed.
Okay.
The guy that owns the building.
Chuck?
I think we need to recognize, uh, Bill Weber again for, um, cleaning up after the festival, there was so much trash strewn around the ball line and stuff. Just we went the extra mile to clean that up.
I was down there recently for a, a ballgame, and I have not seen that field look so good for quite some time, three years, so you did an excellent job.
One thing I think they should do, I don't know who manages those games, but when a game's over, I think they should say, anything's been thrown down, it's been picked up. And unless those kids go in there and pick it up, the main will be throwing it down. There's trash barrels down there, Bill should have to sit down and pick it up after the game.
I also agree with that, and I got my first chance to see the tables. It was very impressive, and they look really nice.
Thank you.
Wish we'd have gotten them for here.
Start saving up.
They did look really nice. Who's next?
I don't, I don't know who to contact, but who's the head of the, uh, the Springfield?
Rodney Woods, Jim.
Rodney Woods. Is he the one that oversees the bingo table?
That's probably Rodney. He's the one that I've always seen.
Well, the church pays for hat leathers and Springfield pays for hat leathers.
Okay. Something needs to be done about the smoking in there. I mean, we have some women around those tables that are chain smokers, and we have people that are allergic to smoke.
And I heard there was more smoke in there this year, and I wasn't in there as much this year, so I, I really didn't see it.
Well, uh.
There was.
If, if they were putting along one side, smoking, and the other side not smoking, that would separate, I mean, people smoking. I thought the walls had fifteen feet around. But I'm curious to know who I should talk to about it.
I'll bring you up, I'll meet you.
Okay. I appreciate it.
Okay.
I don't know, it'd be interesting to check in to see if that would be considered a public building, public structure, yeah. I think it does have a look.
They send it to.
That would be a public, that's a public building, they, it gets a lot of smoke in there. So, I don't know what you need to do about it.
There's no sides or anything, it's just the top, it's not really a building.
That quick easy answer would be it's called public health.
Public, it's public forum.
Yeah.
I'll check, check it out, see what they can get about it.
Yeah, I, I heard the comments about the van that night, too, the, the smoke was pretty bad, and now the van is playing.
But the smoking was bad, I guarantee, on both sides of the table.
Yeah.
Yeah. It was. But they were playing four cards.
Okay, let's, let's move on, uh, next. Pointing at somebody. Anyone else? Gonna move on with full business. First on the list is the referendum. Who cut that?
I put that on there, you said they give you another month to, to check it out.
Well, I'm still unable to get anything printed except for my attorney, and it's listed as an attorney opinion. So, I have no.
Well, I also spoke to state board elections again, and they didn't understand why our mayor was not abiding from what the attorney said.
What attorney said anything?
Needs better.
Well, the state, what person did you talk to, the state board election?
Uh, Gary Neroey.
Gary?
Neroey.
Neroey.
And Ken Menzel in Chicago is on vacation on June eighteen.
And Gary is in Springfield?
Yes. Didn't you say you talked to Ken Menzel, you were waiting for a thirty-day reply?
Kid was supposed to give me a reply back, he has not done so.
Well, it doesn't matter, we're going about the attorney's debt, I think, because when we talk to the state's attorney, he sends us to the attorney. And Springfield sends us to our attorney, that's all we have to tell his attorney for. Read your letter, you've gone through all these statutes.
Okay, Bill.
All right, well, first of all, let's get things straight here. Cash's opinion is an opinion. Unless he's representing state election board reference to this matter, his opinion carries no weight whatsoever. This is an election board issue. If you want to challenge the results of an election, you go to the election board. You come to us with an agency letterhead, with a name, a title, and a signature block citing chapter and verse, why that referendum is not binding, and then we have something to talk about. But does he said, she said stuff on phone calls, ain't nothing to worry.
No, and when that was put on the ballot, did you know it would be legally put on the ballot? That issue should have been brought before the village board.
Negative, negative.
The people can actually draw a referendum and put it on board, that's what they did. The thing I find interesting about Cash's opinion is that that referendum was actually written under five slash twenty-eight dash two, and five slash twenty-eight slash two does not mention in his opinion anything.
Sequence, five twenty-eight dash twenty-eight dash one, and the entire sequence of that statute. That was put through, I don't know how many, it was several.
Well, I don't know.
Well, we as the board, and he has told us, we as the board has a final opinion on this.
Oh, poor shit.
That's first time, good. Go ahead, Bill, you already had it, or go ahead?
Oh, no, go ahead, Jim.
Well, you know, I don't wait a minute now, but I pay taxes just like you people do. When you people elected to represent the people of this town, I'm asking every one of you, I want to answer either one of you.
We should.
Forgive you?
Sure, we pay tax.
Linda?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, the people voted to have this done, why are you going against their vote? You're supposed to be representing people.
That's right.
Yeah.
I have to, if I'm gonna hear it.
The majority of the people didn't even vote.
They carried. They carried by a vote.
Jim, sit down. Jim, sit down.
They carried by a vote.
I think you should order me out.
I don't wait a minute now, but I pay taxes.
Get out of the room. That's right.
That's what the people want. Why are you fighting?
Jim, calm down. What this amounts to is this has gone way past the police department issue, and this has gotten to an issue now where people's rights, their voting rights have been canceled. And that's what has got people so upset over this whole thing. You know, as it was stated in the very beginning, we put this to the people and let the people decide, yes, it was, very long before you got on the board. When it originally went on the board, the first time it was mentioned, to put it to the people, let the people decide, when the board originally put this question on the ballot.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Before this, before you were elected, you took that referendum off.
No, wait a minute.
Yes, you did, too.
What are you talking, when this. We were gonna have, we were, we voted, Bill Ford voted to have the election. Two, but we had two, we had two different?
We had two different.
Petitions went around.
Petitions.
One was for, one was against, and it got to the same pound. So, at the old board, we decided, hey, we're gonna have referendum here, the people will decide what they, if it don't pass, we're gonna, we do it again. If it passes, we do it again. That was the way, that was the original way we said it, said, well, the old board, I know the old board, I'm, what was she adding, you know? But that's the way, that's the way it was originally done. I know that, but it is, we changed, this board voted against, had, had to be the vote. I'm, 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 my point is, going back even further than that than that, I'm going all the way back to two thousand five, when this first started. Right. It should have been put to a vote in two thousand five. That's always been my point. I came in here, starting in April or May of two thousand five, complaining about this. It should have been put to a vote to the people back then, not ramrod it through like it was then in two thousand five. Well, back in, if you remember right, back, I was on the board back in two thousand five. Virginia? Some others were here, come to the board meetings, they were all board. They, they pressured us to. Yes, you did, obviously. And they pressured, and there was nobody, didn't want it. There was no vote, we had to ask people to come in.
We had a special meeting.
We had.
Special town meeting.
We did, and it was, you know, there was no landlord, there was been things, landlord about cars, the things, the other, about cars having a board meeting, due down to police department. There was, there was no no's at that meeting, so there was anybody was in attendance at that time. Then I. It, it should have been put to a vote then.
Well, it really doesn't matter, we have an ordinance itself, because of part.
I know, I know.
We have no police department.
Well, let me, we, the old.
You, uh, I'm sorry, I don't know your name. My name's Kirk Allen, I'm a township supervisor down in Kansas. Um, did the, do you know whether or not the county clerk certified the election results?
Yes, they did.
Makes it a valid referendum. In regards to the opinion, and I'm not a lawyer, but I will share with you our experience with Richard Cash here recently. Richard Cash is our attorney, we had an issue with our multi. We had, uh. Sorry. We had an issue with our multi township situation, and we asked for an opinion. We got an opinion. We did not agree with that opinion. Additional research confirmed that opinion was completely wrong, and we have since rectified the problem. But just because the attorney gives an opinion doesn't make it right. When the certified election results come from the clerk, it's up to the clerk in the state to overturn anything beyond that. But your, your attorney's opinion is just what this gentleman said, it's an opinion? That's all it is, and we've proven more than once that the attorneys are rubber stamping a lot of things based on, and we've always done it this way. And that's not the case that we found down there, so I, I would caution just taking that position that that's what he said. Thank you. I, uh.
You don't think the state board of elections knows?
Kirk Allen, what's your name?
He's such a watchdog.
Open meetings.
Yeah, open meetings, that, he's such a watchdog, if you don't like watchdogs, are.
Okay, that's it.
You, you don't think the, uh, state board of elections knows anything?
Well, the state board of elections will. I have no comment for them, I don't, I don't know what they've told you, I just know.
That's what they have told me, and I asked him to put it in writing, and he put me through to Ken Menzel in Chicago, which is their attorney, and he is on vacation until, uh, the sixteenth.
I too spoke to two, two ladies at the state board of elections, and they said just exactly the opposite. That the, anything that was written under five twenty-eight dash six would be, uh, information. Any other statute other than five twenty-eight dash six would make it binding. I asked them to put it in Ken writing, they sent me to Ken Menzel, I talked with Ken. Ken said he'd have to research it, but it was the opinion. said he'd have to research it, but it was the opinion of the state attorney general's office that they were not allowed to put anything in writing.
I have a question. Your way down the stage, how do you retain something that you've already dissolved?
The way I understand, the way the referendum was put, this was a backdoor referendum to overturn the ordinance to dissolve the police department.
Well, you shouldn't have been worded the right way to do that, you don't retain something that you don't have.
It was worded as simply as possible and I confused the issue. Now, if you want a five-line question that muddled, yeah, you know, this and that, whatever, it was put clear and concise. Shall we retain the police department? Yes, or no? Very simple.
But you already got an ordinance to get away with it, so you didn't...
That's not the issue. The people have voted.
I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
Kirk. I don't see what everybody's reacting about. Everybody I've talked to about getting the police department back has said, yes, they want it back. It just seems to me like the few that don't want it back are causing problems and making doubts where there shouldn't be. The people said they want the police station back, and if that's the way the vote goes, there shouldn't be no more figuring about. That should be what's done.
I have the municipality to have a police department, it even provides for a special tax that can be imposed, they'll pay for that. Do you all want to help?
Can be, doesn't have to be.
No, doesn't have to be, but can do.
I think to keep our families safe, if everybody says, yeah, let's put a little bit more money in tax to pay for the police department, then that's what should be done. The, the reason we have a police department is so our families can be safe, and so we can be safe. So, again, there shouldn't be a problem there.
And as you know, I've already, last year, volunteered the dollar value of my services to be applied toward the police department, which is not an insignificant chunk of money.
Right.
And furthermore, let's just separate this out as far as advisory and binding. Last year, we did the advisory issue, I could advise the board what the people wanted. We went and did the petition, so it was a petition for the police department that went around, there was a petition against the police department that went around. The petition for the police department was a clear winner. Clear winner, had 50% more signatures on it than the one again. You folks, did anyone, did you challenge it?
There was no sense in challenging it.
Um, yeah, because your people completely disregarded it.
The vote on the ballot, they were one by one vote.
I think there would be a lot more people would want the Brockton Police Department retained if they did Brockton, not 49, not at 3 o'clock in the afternoon, at night, it's when they're knocking on the doors, they don't do that in the afternoon, they do it, and we gotta have two police cars, we gotta have two or three officers, that's fine, but it's breaking the city.
It was not breaking the city. I'm sorry, I didn't dispute that. Anyone else got anything to say before we move on here? So, what do you guys want to do with this referendum? I'm going to be on vacation next week, I will make that time to scold to Springfield, and I'll sit down with this Gary Neroey if I can get in with him, and we will hush this issue out. Is that acceptable? Betty?
Yes, I would suggest that you talk to this election person and have him come here and talk to the people.
They won't do it, and they won't do it in writing because I asked, he wasn't even emailing it.
That's exactly what they told me.
But the lawyers, that's right, but I think the lawyer knows what he's doing. Handle things before, so I think also we've chosen that we, we'll have to take the lawyer's advice.
I got a question. They say there's only one vote that says that we are to have a police department, right?
Right.
How many votes was cast? Thirty?
How many?
Maybe thirty?
No, there was more, like ninety.
Thirty-nine.
But how many, I'm gonna ask this, how many votes did Mr. Sher have to win his election over the whole county? If you're only talking, the majority didn't win it, one or two, same as eleven or a thousand.
That's right.
And it is, well, the people have it, that's the way I look at it. Now, I'm not educated.
Sounds pretty smart to me.
But, uh...
Bill?
Just for giggles, in that opinion written by Mr. Cash, I just crossed my mind, does he mention it? Was he made aware that we did the informational petition last year?
No.
Before the referendum thing, that he wanted to say now is only informational? It'd be interesting to find out if he was made aware of that.
I'm sure he's the one that probably typed that.
You're sure? Oh, okay, did you tell him?
I'm asking Dennis, who typed that up? When you got that referendum, did the lawyer do it?
No.
Did he? What's on that to do it?
It doesn't matter who typed it up, it was matter that it was accepted by the state...
Well, you wanna know what the lawyer knew about it, did the lawyer know about it?
I don't know, Cash knew about it or not.
Because again, we did the informational thing a year ago. Y'all disregarded it, so we, the people, came back and did a binding one. That was our intent, that's the way it was worth, that's the way it goes down.
And I didn't see it on the ballot where it said anything about being an informational election.
It doesn't say that. To go on with the attorney's opinion here, I also read the letter on disposition of property, and if this is his opinion, it's going illegally to get rid of the property, then the godly property will be absolutely legally awesome. And he's the one that did that. So, we did it wrong. I think it made the time that we looked for your attorney. I'm sorry, Betty.
I said, how long has it been saved?
A long time. Bills?
Everybody has their own opinion about everything that's going on. It's true, the vote was taken and one side won. But, there has to be some kind of compromise. If the police force were to start up again, it is not the same police force that we had before. A new structure can be formed, new times, new people hired, under a different set of rules. It doesn't have to be the same police force. And I don't know if you're against it, if that changes anybody's mind or anything else, but the structure of the force itself being changed might make more people happy. You guys start from scratch with the ability to do that.
Well, we need to get to an answer as to what we're going to do tonight, because this meeting needs to move on. If someone's got any suggestions, I'm gonna table the issue. So be it. Not to table the police department, I'm on there also.
There aren't any days.
Until the next meeting, I assume.
Dennis, if you can leave it, let's, let's say you go to the state board of elections, and you talk to the gentleman over there, or talk to the gentleman in Chicago, and they give you an opinion either way. Is it still gonna be the decision of the board, that's what they wanna do? And I'll work on it. You know, the vote went one more than the should have. Let's say Kendall, whatever his name is, comes back and says, hey, this is some bribery. One people want to be satisfied with that, you know, because like, what's, what's it gonna solve if you get that case in the way?
The only thing that I can see that will solve this whole issue is to get it in front of a judge and let a judge decide.
I don't think that's necessary, we shouldn't add our hearing.
He asked what my opinion was, that's what I'm talking about.
I'll guarantee you right now, if you people don't restate the police department, that's exactly where out this case is going.
We can't restate a family.
Well, I have one question, you know, we seem to have trouble with these kids in town. We don't have the police department, and the sheriff's department won't do any about it, anything about it, what are we gonna do? And we got a big problem in this town. Some of these people know that. Some of these people know that.
You always have these same problems. As long as I look here, it's exactly the same door.
No more than what it's ever been.
Where's the air on some of these children?
Well, the other night when they were knocking on doors at 1:00 or 1:30, we had a deputy in town and we also had a security guard that was watching the barn, and it still happened.
Well, I hope they start ringing your doorbell.
They have, of course, they have, Jim, and I called, I'll tell you what I did.
If you like it, that's fine, but some people don't.
Well, listen, I'll tell you what I did, and this was right after this. They were knocking on my window, I thought it was gonna break it. So, I called Dennis, when he was in uniform, and a policeman, and he said I had to catch them. So, it wasn't 10 minutes till I called him, and I said, you stop right now, I got a gun, don't you move. And the other person got on the phone and called Dennis, Dennis came over. We called the parents, the parents talked to him, right, Dennis?
Right, they did.
I took care of it myself. And all you have to do is catch them and be nice to them. That kid has been so nice to me since, she volunteered and helped us in this park.
Well, I'll tell you what, I'll tell you what, you guys are here to represent this town. The next time somebody wakes me up at 4 o'clock in the morning, I'm gonna knock on every one of your doors and you're gonna represent what's going on in this town.
That's okay, I don't care, I'm up.
Each and every one of us.
Another thing that, that you may or may not know about is that there's just more to this mystery than just knocking on doors too. Rodney informed me that there are several windows kicked in. Sir, windows kicked in, Mr. Senator?
We, we set up last police department, we had lots of problems, we spent a lot more money than we really had to spend. Like I said, we can start from the new, we set it up where to maybe make it more, where we don't have a whole bunch of overhead, we were paying more overhead than we were paying for salaries last time, which I, you know, that you well know. But there's a way, we need to set up, get other police departments, like that cat, they've got part-time policemen.
Yeah.
You know, maybe get with them, have them get to see how they've done, and what they were actually paying cost.
We need little towns, we don't think Kansas is a bigger town, they've got more dealers. Christine?
Well, I've lived in other communities, and what other communities have done with problems like this is do a community watch. I don't know if it's something that's been done here or not, but what they do is they have volunteers, these volunteers take an hour shift, and what they do is they go around town, and if they see any kids or anything, they follow the kids and they call the cops.
And they take two hours? Well, the sheriff's department right now is not working either, because these, these boys were actually witnesses, and the sheriff actually took a signed complaint, I understand it was a signed complaint anyway, and he didn't even pass it on to the state's attorney's office. So, you know...
Another reason why we need a police force here, so you don't take two hours for a cop to come and help.
Dennis, the thing that bothers me a little bit is, is, you know, we have kids in town, they get in trouble and everything, there's no consequences.
Right.
There's no consequences for these kids.
Right.
They know, you know, their parents aren't gonna do anything, life support to the city, the kid's supposed to show up, how the attorney, there's no choice, but there's no consequences for whatever they do. The kid, you're doing it.
Right.
You agree?
I totally agree.
You know, so they were supposed to start program, you know, and it just never gave the ball.
And the police department was here before, what did the town lose that way?
I'm sorry, I can't...
When the policeman department was here before, what did the town of Brockton lose?
Uh, to my knowledge, it was anything.
Well, I'd like to ask everybody that's against this, what is your life worth? How long do you want a policeman to take to get there, to save your life? I have a three-year-old grandson in my house, and I would lay my life down in a heartbeat, but I'd probably go to prison for it. If a policeman's standing between me and that criminal, I have a chance to stand out of jail and he has a chance of going somewhere else, not causing trouble, and not killing anybody in my family. So, what is a life worth to you guys? I mean, I, I don't see that there is any price you can set on that.
Well, I had, I have a business here in town and it was broke into, I called Block Brockton Police Department twice, nobody ever returned my phone call, ever, nobody ever showed up, never. And still today, I've never heard a word from them. So, they won't be here.
I can understand your frustration, but how many times have they shown up? I had a chance to deal with that police officer several times when I first moved in this town, and he was a pretty good guy, I mean, he went by the law, by the book, but he was very fair, and you could talk to him. And that's what a policeman's supposed to do, is make you feel safe.
Well, he never showed up.
Well, I can, I can challenge that too, I mean, as far as that goes, Robin, I had a person trying to force his way in my front door, my wife, six years ago, we're still waiting for the sheriff to show up.
Well, this was the Brockton policeman I called.
Well, you've always been told, everyone in this town has always been told, if it's an emergency, 911, because there was never an officer on duty 24/7. Yes?
If they're not doing their job, then they may get fired, or you, police officers in there, you don't do your job, you get fired.
My main objection to the little thing is, it seemed to be shrouded in secrecy. People had no idea what equipment we owned, what, you know, what, what the police are spending, what they're authorized to spend, and...
It was all done in minutes, every meeting, everything was on the bill's table, Jenny could have been asking on any of the...
We need to have at least a report every month from the police, the chief of police. How many times did he say, he had no, nothing to report?
Betty?
That's, that's what we were told in the beginning, that our policeman would get up here and give us a report every month. He never did.
The only, the only thing that we objected to was sitting here and giving you that we were called to Betty Hunt's house at 8 o'clock for domestic dispute, that, it's too small a town for that to be necessary. That part of it is what Paris does, and a lot of people object to that, the county does it, I think, they put it in the newspaper, and we didn't want that, the board that organized this police department agreed at the time that they did not want names published. So... Uh, Roger?
Just what you said, when you give a report, there, I think everybody in there, you could stand up and say, I had two break-ins in Brockton on the week of the ninth or whatever. You don't have to give names. I had a domestic, I worked two domestic disturbance, and I issued three speeding tickets. People want to know what you did, they don't care who it was, they just want to know what you did.
But that's the complaints I got, when the reports were being given, and so many citations was issued, and so many calls to service, whatever it was for the deal, it was, well, we want to know who it was.
No, you can't give it. I never heard it, I understand.
I got a question, how much do we have to pay the county not to show up?
To pay the county not to show up?
I'm sure it's costing something out of our budget.
Not the town budget.
I don't, I wouldn't be aware that we were paying the county anything not to show up.
Some board, there will be money that you ain't gonna get, we go to a council, but we don't have a police force. If you'll check it out, if you'll find out, if you're not...
Now, run that by me again, because I'm not understanding what you're trying to say.
Okay, the county has a budget.
Yeah.
They ain't gonna come out here and patrol this village, right, getting something, part of your motor fuel tax, or a part of some board to cover various expenses.
But your county taxes goes to cover the sheriff's department expenses, if that's what you're considering.
Well, but the part that you should be getting to cover if you're a police department, don't come back to you.
No, that would go to the sheriff's department, because that's the way it's listed out.
And what about our cake? And what about our tickets?
We got our part of the tickets, we always did. And that was about, and I know there's gonna be a lot of disagreement, but it was somewhere in the neighborhood of about 40 to 50 percent of what the village spent on the police department was what we recovered in tickets. Bill?
I hate to be obvious, but just to clarify one thing about how we try different things, you know, try to satisfy everybody by trying things. Now, I talked about Virginia trying the Nice Guy route. We tried the Nice Guy route just here recently. There was a window busted out here and balled three boys. The windows got repaired, but I seem to remember somewhere along the line, this entire board voted those three boys to serve 30 hours each.
And it never does.
And where is the result of that? Where is the itinerary at the time they showed up?
As I explained, you may not have been at that meeting, but as I explained, the only authority that this board had to charge any child with, you know, for community service, came through an agreement that Ray Solvers had set up with Matt Sullivan at the time, the state's attorney's office, which allowed first-time offenders to serve community service to keep them out of the court system. The minute that the board dissolved the police department, it dissolved that agreement.
Okay. In my point exactly, I just wanted to bring that up to show that the Nice Guy route is not a viable option. There is no consequence, as this lawyer brought up, there is no consequence for the perpetrators, if we will, on anything in this town.
We have no authority to do anything to someone.
Without the police department.
Without the police department.
But don't you have that authority without the police department?
No, I don't. I used to, but under the new statutes of law, under the Illinois Police, and don't quote me on this, but it's the Training Board Act, it requires a mayor to take the same course that a police officer does, to become a conservative piece, to be able to issue citations or arrests. When Ralph was mayor, they did it. It was legal. It's not anymore. Christine?
I've seen the little building that has for the police department here, and my question is, did you guys have a dispatcher for the police officer?
We worked dispatch off the count.
Well, now I can see why they never showed up to her place. You got to have a town dispatcher to take local calls and be able to call the...
If you would've called the police department number, as Robin says she had, she did, then message read, "If this is an emergency, call, hang up, dial 911. Otherwise, an officer will call you back at the next available schedule."
Did that happen?
A break-in should've been called 911.
Well, but that's my point. If you had dispatcher there, she would've taken the call, she would've got hold of the call and said, "Look, we have a disturbance at blah, blah, blah address. You need to go over there." And that's what dispatchers do. But when you got county dispatcher doing it, you gotta realize that they've got multiple towns, and they've got multiple callers, and the most important ones will take president. So I'm not at all surprised that nobody got back to her about her shot. So if you're going to do the police department again here, you've got to have an in-town dispatcher. So, so my calls there, stuff.
What was the date of your break-in?
I have no idea now. Well, I'm gonna make a motion. I'm gonna make a motion to take Cash's opinion and vote against them. I'd like to...
Who would have stood? I don't think we...
I'll say it.
That one, yeah.
I didn't hear what you said.
We didn't hear it.
She's made a motion to accept Cash's opinion, to go against the referendum, and Linda's second.
John Kraft, because the GED that I said is holding business, police department, it's too vague to let the public know that you're going to make a decision on the police department, which means any decisions made tonight will be nullified, court deal means that.
Dan?
My question is, why was this even put on the ballot if the board can just disregard what the people voted for and just make their own decision? Then why was it even put on the ballot? Why wasn't it left off and let the board decide? I don't understand.
They can't say?
First of all, John...
I just don't understand.
The board wants those to learn the day.
All right. We've already banned a motion made, it was seconded, it was voted on, it was passed to kill the police department. It was dead. Why this went and got put on the ballot means absolutely nothing. The police department was already dead.
August Griffin did this illegally.
I think, you know, it was, I don't know.
He did what he was told.
We took K-Pot, the board did, we killed it. Somebody brings it up, puts it on the ballot. It should've ever been put on the ballot. It was already dead. It was dead, people.
The people put it on the ballot.
Yeah. Christine?
Are you supposed to represent the people of this town? Was that why it didn't work to do?
I make a motion, move it to executive session. Do you want a second?
For what reason?
What purpose?
You gotta have a reason.
We have something to discuss here.
For what reason?
The board has something to discuss.
That's not a valid reason.
Throw you off, then, yeah.
And you're not discussing personnel, we already know that.
Why did we have a lawyer to talk about Kansas? We should've had a lawyer, but he did the letters to save the best of town money. He said if he came, it was more expensive than putting out letters. And Mr. Cash should have been here at nine. I thought the available one called now.
Well, as I see it, the board is here to do as the people wish. It seems like to me that the board went against the people's wishes, and that's something they didn't want to get rid of. So, since the board is forcing people, wanting people to listen to their people, and stop with this, our lawyer said, "The two kids, the lawyer don't live here, the lawyer doesn't put up with what's going on in here." And that's the ruthless lawyer, and how he sounds like an idiot. So, forget the lawyer, what do people want?
...for hours what's going on in Kansas, and the things we're seeing with our kids down there, what's happening, but the question comes back to one very simple legal question. Was this issue put on the ballot legally with the referendum? The clerk obviously put it on the ballot. It was voted on, the clerk certified your election results. If you have an issue, you've gotta take it with a formal complaint to the state board of elections, do an actual legal process that has, nobody's doing that. Everybody's arguing over a lot of different things, but you had before you a valid certified election result from the county clerk who was elected by the people. I'm all done.
You think it could've been illegal, and he couldn't have?
That would be a question for the clerk.
It may not be certified if it's still advisory. Being certified just means that it was voted, right?
As far as advisory, whatever, what it reads on the ballot, your ballot passed for police department. I mean, it was certified.
I still think the best thing to do with this is to get some kind of a legal opinion other than the attorney, someone from the election board to state with this.
I'm sorry, I don't believe there's even a motion needed, because there's nothing on your agenda that says you're gonna make a motion, and the public did not properly notify that you planned on making a motion tonight, so I think we should just move on to the next item.
If there's referendum and anything that's stated on there...
No, it's not the police department. I think correct.
If there's...
Or referendum.
And we have the referendum on the agenda, we can pull on the referendum.
It needs to be stated that you plan on voting on a referendum.
You never have stated that here.
No.
Never been in your state before.
Well, just because you've always done it one way doesn't make her right.
We just went through this one.
And if you do make a motion, I'll fight, I can't complain myself, and I can do that, and it'll come back and void your decision.
Given that opinion, I believe that we still need to table this and do some more research before you guys get the justice and lay the issues that people can't move. Bill?
I just, I sit here, and I live in a town, and talking about putting your bodies in the place of bullets and your life in jeopardy. I'm 60 years old. I've never seen any of this happen here. Doesn't mean that I won't go home tonight and get killed. But we don't have gangs with guns walking down the streets of town praying on it yet. That's first thing. Second thing is, Thomas Paine said that when you elect an official, you are electing their intelligence and you are electing their opinion. And that is what we've done. All of these people didn't just sit out in a chair and decide to sit in front of you. When we elected them, we also elected their opinion and their will, and have faith in them that they are gonna do the right thing. So you can vilify them as much as you want. Point is, we elected them. And I'm sorry, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much. Dennis?
The other night I had a problem, I saw a problem, could've been here in town. They were boys. I don't know what the situation was. A person tried to pick up, come by, hit on it with a voice, scoured off to him, whatever. He turned and went back to past the house, got out, there were these young children there, babysitters, tried to go to the house, and the kids said it wasn't worth it. So fortunately, I was standing out there in the yard, and I'm sure that he saw me, the situation was, he left. But he kept driving around, I think the parents got him, I don't know what, I think that's Dennis talking, that there's things we could have called.
Did he have a license number?
Well, I know he was. I found out, I went and checked out.
Well, we're a small town, and I think we have small problems. We have Mr. Cash, we have...
Christine?
Compared to our model, we don't have.
We've got, we've got problems, but we've had other kids who've killed. Kids, we've had, kids are smart enough to figure out, play sports in the townhouse, they're playing games.
That's right.
And I've talked to different police officials who've been in other small towns. We go through it.
But I can also guarantee you that had Ray Solvers sent a complaint on the shore lock the other day, it would've went to the state's attorney, and the state's attorney would have at least been allowed to make the decision as to whether charges should be filed. It's not up to the sheriff to file these charges, and it's not up to him, it's Welcher. It's up to the state's attorney's office, and it was not given to him.
Well, we've never, even then, we had the police force, how many instances that we had that's been filed with the state's attorney?
Sir?
We've had. There were no consequences.
There were some with no consequences, and some with very definite consequences. There's a few people that are in prison right now because of this police department.
Not the kids who...
Not kids, yes.
That's what you have to...
Don't give me that.
We're complaining about the kids. I don't know if this is what the big judge offered, not kids, but you wanna have it. I understand what you're saying. And it's difficult without the parents backing you to get results, and that's some of the problems.
Well, I think we need to move on to the appropriation.
This is on the table.
Well, if we go along with it...
So, are you withdrawing your motion?
No, I'm not withdrawing. I don't want to do it.
I guess we call for votes then.
Is there a second?
Yeah, there was, where your lines were second.
Okay, we're all...
What is the...
Motion, please, lack of notes, I have a shot. Motion to accept the attorney Cash's opinion to accept the referendum as advisory, is that what you wanted? Is that the... So, they're voting to accept Mr. Cash's opinion as advisory. That's what the vote is.
Oh, Mr. Cash. That was, I'll pick up this one right here. You're basing that motion on the second page, that middle paragraph, middle paragraph, correct?
And I'll read this paragraph so people know what it says. Says, "The referendum that was involved in this case was instituted by filing pursuant to section 28-6 of the election code." 28-6 of the election code specifically provides that local questions of public policy, authorizing this section of statewide questions of public policy authorized by section 28-9 shall be advisory public questions, and no legal effects shall result in the adoption or rejection of such proposition. This is further indication that the referendum involved was an advisory opinion."
Dennis, I got a question.
Jan, your first.
Have you checked the state board of elections, and they say that this voting was legal, is this referendum that you're voting on now reversible, or will we get the police department?
It's my opinion that there's gonna be a complaint filed on this vote right now, and it's gonna be nullified in the first place.
Okay, all right. Based on that, I think yes.
Robin?
No more than one.
Linda? Virginia?
Yes.
And Leon?
Boom.
And Shukiri?
Now that you've done that, do you want to talk about this letter of the police department, or what did your...
Yeah, I think you probably should discuss it.
Mr. Cash has sent a letter on the disposal of the property. In this letter, he gives two options. One, an ordinance needs to be created, adopting that this surplus property can be sold. Or two, a resolution has to be passed by this board, and it has to be published in the newspapers for not less than one week, if there are any things unheard of here. That's the basic rule, what I give out.
But we do not have, we do not have that deal with, you can have options.
You can have an option.
You know, how I remember my experience has been that generally that would be either bid second or an auction now, with publication on the day of the auction. It would probably be cheaper to have an option than it would have been.
I think it would be just the opposite, because you're gonna pay an auction here at percentage, or an auction, and you're gonna have public bids that would just be posted in the newspaper. Christine?
Um, well, I understand this. You're talking about getting rid of the property that the police station sits on.
Correct.
So you're jumping the gun, talking about something when the police station, have it or not, is not even close to being finished, it sounds like. So...
They just, in their opinion, just finished.
Well, I guarantee it's not. It's going to come back. And so, so if you go and sell the property, and then the people finally get what they want, and get their police station back, then don't have a place to...
They can't sell anything tonight anyway, because they have to follow this, unlike they did with the Kyler property, and this has gotta either have an ordinance drafted up and passed and published, or it's gotta have a resolution drafted up and published in the fishbowl before anything could be sold.
And who passes it? And this, and who passes it, for people or the board?
This board.
And that's for them, the property itself, and we were concerned with the property that the building is sitting on, it's just a building and contents, it's all these, it's not, not that, there's not real estate.
I would buy them, sell them all.
But you have real estate beforehand.
If I believe, back when that property was given to you guys for a police department, there was a clause put in there, it went back to the owners.
What, that property?
That is the property where the building is.
That's possible. I don't, I don't think it was after that.
That'd be all right. We don't care. We don't want the property. We'll be fine. Besides, I don't know how many people come up on our inventory, because Dennis gave us one that is property bought, and one that was donated, and then it was changed from donated to loaned, and this starts back in December of '03. It was purchased and donated. It was purchased and donated, and then when we asked for one, when did you give it to us, just a few months ago? But it says some items may be missed. So we really don't know what our inventory is.
Well, as I explained to you several times in the past, I have indeed given Mr. Cash several options to find out what to do with the evidence that's being stored in the police department and the files that needs to be disposed of properly, and he has failed to do so. And I'm not given anything, any access to anything until he does that. And that's the way it is.
Yeah, he said, he said, well, he didn't put it right, but you will put it right.
He's got to put it right.
He restored the county jail square of his floor.
And you've done this on your own to make that arrangement happen?
No, I haven't made the arrangement.
Okay.
Just got the information of what you do?
Well, I was told that county jail would not accept the evidence.
Where are the ones that told me?
Where are the ones that told me to? They evidently changed their opinion. Uh-huh. If you want to do this, then the ordinance, it would be what I would suggest. And you can get Mr. Cash. You evidently have a good rapport with him, you're there quite often.
I beg your pardon?
Yeah, well, I've been trying to get Mr. Cash to send us an updated copy of the BHA ordinance and an amended copy of the ANO ordinance, and I wasn't able to get anything out of him. And I was told you were there a week or so ago, and we, boom, boom, got two letters. So... Billis?
Can we get rid of Mr. Cash?
Obviously.
I mean, it seems like...
Let's take a vote on it.
I mean, there's no problems. Nothing against Mr. Cash, I don't know the man. But from everything we've heard here tonight, maybe the board needs to consider Mr. Cash.
That would cost a lot, wouldn't it?
Mr. Cash may be given a kickback if he's...
Let's not go there, Dennis. Let's, let's, no, let's not go there. I don't know, it's up to you, that's the way you're going to do it. You want to get an ordinance? You want to get rid of Mr. Cash? What do you want to do?
That's not on the agenda.
Yeah.
Good point. Appropriations ordinance. The only two changes that I made on this appropriations ordinance from what everyone agreed on last time was the $8,500 in water testing and consulting and a missing lane, or, I mean, I'm sorry, water plant refinance of $25,000. We need to pass this. Are there any questions?
Some water, some down here, some water.
There's an open discussion, as I need a motion to approve of the appropriations for 2012, 2013, as discussed last week. We'll be on hold for a week. Yeah. Is there a second?
So you imagine as you prepare the document, when is the 2013?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. That's... I am. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Penny, what do you mean, got in your sidewalk bit?
Well, I, I actually just have one. And, um, I don't know what we did done. Yeah, I don't know about that, Dennis. That doesn't say vote for that, is that, was that legal what we just did? Is that legal what we just did?
Where, where's this at?
Um, Carol Moss's, from her driveway, she's to, she end up her fence.
Okay. I don't want to be the devil's advocate here, but again, that's county. And it's my understanding that we cannot use municipal funds to fix something in the county district. They can do it for us because we reside inside them, but they don't reside inside us. So...
The last one, we talked about this.
I, I didn't realize you were talking, but I guess I did realize that, girl. And all of a sudden, come up with...
When we fix the sidewalk, at least the wall line, $280. Anything else is on, I guess.
Now, is that just the list?
No. We're going to replace it.
Is that to replace the whole place?
It's not replacing the whole sidewalk, it's, um, 20 feet.
We need a motion to...
That's $280. It might be 40 yards.
Could you play it to fix or...
It will be replaced.
Okay. A section?
I think it would be like four sections, I think.
So do you have a motion to read? To replace four sections? Okay.
Do you have...
20 feet, to replace 20 feet? Okay. And this is where, it's, it'll be on French Street, it's the road line.
I can't give you the...
That's okay. Okay, that motion to replace 20 feet of sidewalk at French Street, leave the road line? And a second?
Is that okay?
And a second from Leon? All in favor?
Aye.
Any other question? All my questions. Was the, the motion that I just made, was that a legal motion? I guess we can do it, we can approach it. This is the way it has always been done.
Right.
I'm glad it was a legal motion. On that same table, the way it was done before this board set here was, it was all, everything was out of old business, new business. So, there's changes, so we may, we're going to need to adopt some...
We have to be more, I want to be more specific in my...
Right.
Yes, we will be needing that.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Paula. Do we need to reattach the bill to this too, or just reattach that all over?
I don't know.
Anyone want to talk about that again? Okay, what is open discussion? Richard, did you have something?
Uh, yeah, I guess I could. It's been along me, but basically, you have two versions of the shorter panel.
Is the shorter?
Water plant spine.
And these are your final bills?
Yeah.
Well, what is the final total? What is the final total?
Uh, whatever that spreadsheet was I gave to the, to the bank, it was around $370 or something.
Well, plus the lease sale. Do you think these are included?
Uh, I don't know, you're going to get those. They shouldn't be, there shouldn't be, not in that note, to take care of those.
These won't go to the bank, you made it out of the sales.
If there's no more open discussion, I think we're...
No, listen, I had something to add.
I asked for this to be, you know, I'm ready, let's do it.
Okay, this is probably something that I need to talk to Rick about, probably. But we talked about getting a new garage door, that ice cream garage, that door on there. Are we going to get that? We were up there one day, and that door's still here.
I'll have to try and get it back.
There again, this should be under old business, but you're talking about that dog ward, and I can't talk to him about that.
I'm still waiting on Mr. Cash's letter, or is...
What you asking to do?
I asked him to recreate a section, an amendment to that ordinance to take it out or exclude, get such options.
Uh, can anything be done about J.D. Rose parking that truck on the sidewalk? Is there room behind that, back there on, uh, we have people walking at police stops every day?
I could talk to J.D. to give a background. Uh, other than that, aye.
And what's your opinion on getting the high school garage survey? Do you know where the boundary line is there?
I don't. I don't think I know where it is.
Do you think, do you know where it is?
To keep up.
That's probably Leon.
You mean like, from the bank property to the town property?
From the garage to the old high school property. He's got a police car sitting there, I don't know where the line is. He can't get in there now to do anything. No.
It's all still, it's all still town owned, though, right? I mean, we do, we all know actually, is he on the...
Well, yes, yes.
Is it, we can establish where...
The town owns the garage and park, ballpark.
We all know of that, Allenway, there.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, where is the boundary line?
So, you're talking about, oh, you're an old... Does the bank own, where they have the bank or this town listed?
No, they need...
Listed for 99 years for, so that's owned by the town when the bank was set?
No, it's owned by the town, it owns the high school. No, it isn't.
No, they say, say owned it, fine, they listed for 99 years, so they're county back there. So the city actually owns the property, the bank? Does the guy own it?
There should be something, I don't know, that's what's... I just always assume that.
I think the bank is leased at like a dollar a year for 100 years or whatever. That should be for him somewhere. When was our bank? Definitely. No, you have to go down your ideas.
Yeah, but...
Not you and I.
But it's you and I.
Oh, yeah. I want to get your phone, I'm taking one, I'm going to choke Junior Berkeley, and I would want you to...
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sure.
Can you find out, did he, my thought that was...
Not too much, I can ask him. Or we can look back through the minutes.
Are you guys talking about the lease? Because Gary knows, he was on the board when all this happened.
Gary knows.
It was a lease for 99 years to the bank.
Let's go on.
To the town owned it at that time. Now, if you guys didn't partition it out when you sold it, gave it to that guy, I'm assuming he owns it with the lease.
So when the school building was sold, the Ben joins and went to the, to Ben, and then from Ben it went to Kevin Brown.
And before Ben, it was...
Well, I wasn't on the board when Ben joined and bought it.
I wasn't.
Well, you guys would have had to deed it over to him.
Yeah, I wasn't on the board with that source, I don't know.
Okay.
Is that it? Anybody else? I hope you hear that word.
I was putting the assessor's office on that, I would assume.